I think we can start the webinar right away. So, a very good evening to all the panelists and attendees. Welcome to our 2023 webinar series and thank you so much for supporting us throughout all these years. I am Kushi Javiri, the facilitator for today's webinar and have been joined by Ms. Vaishnavi as a sub facilitator. And today we are here to encourage you to pursue your further studies in Japan. And this project is hosted by the University of Tokyo India Office and is funded by the Ministry of Education. In today's webinar, we will be giving you insights into the student life in Japan, information about the MEC scholarships and will also be giving you information about the undergraduate programs offered at the University of Tokyo. Additionally, towards the end of the webinar, we will be also having interactive session in where you can ask all your questions to our panelists. Please, but please make sure you're asking your questions in the Q and A portal and not the chat box. Once again, please make sure that you're asking all your questions in the Q and A portal so that all our panelists can answer the questions. And I would like to request all the panelists to turn off your video and audio when you're not presenting. Now I'll be sharing the agenda of today's webinar. I hope everyone can see my screen. So now I'll be explaining the flow of today's webinar. Firstly, we'll have a presentation about the overview of student life in Japan by Ms. Vaishnavi Takur from the University of Tokyo. Then we have a presentation on the MEC's government scholarship by Mr. Yonihara, the first secretary of the Embassy of Japan. Followed by the presentation by the University of Tokyo India Office by Ms. Sakshi Roy, the assistant manager. And lastly, we'll have an interactive session in where panelists will answer all the questions that students have regarding Japan's higher education. Now I'd like to request Ms. Vaishnavi Takur to give us an insight into her student life in Japan. Over to you, Ms. Vaishnavi.
Thank you, Kushi-san, for the introduction. Let me start, share my screen now. I hope it is visible. So, yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining today's webinar and I'm very delighted to be here to share my experience of studying in Japan. A few years ago, I was only other in looking for opportunities and guidance about how to study in Japan. So I'm very happy to be here to present my experience and I hope it will provide some motivation and a little guidance for considering your studies in Japan. So let me start with a brief introduction about myself. I'm currently a doctoral student in the University of Tokyo. Prior to this, I completed my master's degree in electrical engineering in the University of Tokyo itself. So before coming to Japan and before joining the University of Tokyo, I worked as a senior electrical engineer in Atlantic Metropolitan Hyderabad. And then I decided to pursue higher studies and join the University of Tokyo. So in the university, I'm currently researching with the Okada Lab. So Okada Lab and our team, we work on solar panels. So we are trying to improve the efficiency of the solar panels using semiconductor physics, properties related to semiconductor physics. So if you are an undergrad student and are looking to for labs which like in electrical engineering or materials or if you are passionate about renewable energy and solar cells, so you can definitely consider contacting the professor. And let me proceed further. So in today's presentation, I'll start with why did I choose Japan? And the scholarship I have received for studying here and I'll share my experience of the timeline of the application process and some of the challenges I faced in like while coming to Japan and after coming to Japan. And I'll end with the academic and cultural experiences. So without any delay, so let me start with why Japan? So why did I choose Japan in the first place? So I chose Japan for several reasons and when I look back, I would like the first reason would be the excellent education system. So when we consider the education system in Japan, it is slightly different from education in India. So in India, the education system is centralized. For example, we only have a national entrance exams or state level entrance exams to join universities. But whereas in Japan, the admission process into the university lies with the university. So each university has their own admission process. In that way, the universities in Japan are divided into three categories, national, public and private. So frankly, there is, there are many good universities in each of these sectors. There is no much difference between them. So the difference would be in the tuition fees and the other expenses. So other than that, there are equally good private universities and equally good public and national universities. So and when it comes to the programs and the courses, so most of us Indians or like we think when we consider considering studying abroad, we think especially in Japan, we think that we should know Japanese language or the program is in Japanese language. So this is one of the common misconceptions which students in India have. So but in opposite to that, there are many English-based courses, both in undergraduate, graduate and also in doctoral programs. So you need, we need not know any Japanese language to pursue these courses. And life example is me, I have like before coming to Japan, I had a zero Japanese language proficiency. So we can easily continue like enroll in the courses and finish our education. And another reason why I chose Japan was I was interested in pursuing higher education in a different cultural setting. So and Japan seemed to be like the perfect place for me and also I'm fascinated by the Japanese culture and I wanted to experience it in the first hand. So that's why I chose Japan. But just saying these reasons to our parents, I understand that coming from an Indian family background, just these reasons are not sufficient to convince parents and family. So they're mostly, they're very concerned about sending us abroad and living alone. So in order to clear some of the misconceptions and the doubts regarding the lifestyle here, to say, I would say that Japan has a very quality education and also has very quality lifestyle. So students need not worry about commuting to the, to the universities from their, from their residence because there is excellent public transportation system which is highly reliable and the most safest and the convenient option. And another worry parents might have is about the safety. So Japan, as we all know, it is ranked, it is highly ranked in one of the safest countries. So it is one of the top ten safest countries in the world. And another worry for the parents could be the health and the hospital expenses. So when we consider western countries, we often hear about incidents, how the healthcare system is not so good in the other countries. But in opposite to that, Japan has a very good healthcare system. So the national health insurance policy is one of the excellent policies here and it is one of the salient features of Japan. Parents or in fact students need not worry about the health or the medical expenses because most of it is covered by the national health insurance. And this some part which we have to bear, some universities also provide that compensation as well. So national health insurance is one of the salient features of studying here. And another important factor to consider while studying abroad is the finances. So when we look at the finances, when we compare with the western countries and Japan, we can see a clear difference between the tuition fees in public and private universities. Whereas even the living expenses when we compare it with the western countries, they are almost equal. But the advantage Japan has is the number of scholarships. So there are plenty of scholarships which are available for students, especially international students. And we can take advantage of those scholarships and we can compensate that for this living expenses. So one of the, one of the reasons why I chose to consider Japan is receiving this scholarship. So some of the benefits of this scholarship are, these are the known benefits like, for example, the monthly allowances of the scholarship that starts from one lakh four three thousand to one lakh forty five thousand yen. And when we convert it to Indian rupees, it is around one lakh rupees. And the education fees, the entrance exam fees, tuition fees and matriculation fees is covered by the scholarship. I'm particularly talking here about the MEC scholarship. So the MEC scholarship covers all these expenses and also the travel expenses. That is the flight ticket from India to Japan. And in case after completing education, if, if we decide to go back to India, they even provide the flight ticket from Japan to India as well. And besides these allowances, another important feature of the MEC scholarship is the networking. So we need to understand that MEC scholarship is not a need-based scholarship. It is a merit-based scholarship where like certain number of students are selected from throughout the country and they are sent here to study. So they act as a bridge between India and Japan through research and academia. So these are some of the scholarship benefits which are known to everyone. But another scholarship, salient feature of the scholarship is the scholarship extension. So when we receive this scholarship, MEC scholarship, they initially come here as a research student. So that is, we can conduct research in the universities here for, for up to about two years. So after that, we get converted to master's student and after that to doctoral student. And throughout this program, the scholarship extension is possible. So this is one of the attractive features of the MEC scholarship. So talking about this scholarship, from my experience, the process of application is as shown. And more details about the, I'm covering the graduate school application process, but the undergraduate and the other program scholarship application process will be covered by Mr. Yonihara, the first secretary of Embassy of Japan. So you can get clear idea of the application process for other programs. So in my case, for the graduate school, the application process has four steps. So first is the preliminary application form. In preliminary application form, we have to fill a basic application form, our details with our basic information and field of study and research plan. So this field of study and research plan is one of the most important and compelling documents which decide whether you are selected for the next step or not. So it is very important to have a thorough research idea and a thorough research proposal and a plan in order to fill the, to finish this document. So this decides whether we are, whether we can proceed to the other steps or not. So after the preliminary application form, the second step would be the verification of documents. There is a written test which is just a language test, that is English and Japanese. So like looking at this Japanese written test, we need not worry because this is only to check the level of the Japanese. It does not affect the criteria, like grading criteria or it does not impact our selection process. Because I'm sure that when I gave the English and Japanese test, I'm sure I got like zero marks out of what the total marks. So this is not, this is not considered for the grading. In case you have Japanese language proficiency, it is good. But in case you don't have, it is considered as the best of this too. So and then we have, the written test is followed by an interview. So in interview, they mostly check how, verify like how knowledgeable you are in your research field or in the research proposal and your current experience. So all that matters in the interview. So after interview, the third step would be the university acceptance letter. So once you clear the interview level and you proceed to the next step, so we need to contact the universities and get an acceptance letter. It is important that we receive at least one acceptance letter from at least one university. If not, the all the steps or all the process we have done is of no use. So it's very important to have a university acceptance letter. And in case we get acceptance from more than one university, it is good and we can, and we can give our university preference order and embassy decides the final, final university placement. So this is the general application process for graduate school. And so these are the various list of, list of documents. So these documents and these things are easily available on the website. So I highly recommend you to check the website very frequently because they change year on year. So it is better to check the website. And then from my experience, the timeline of receiving the scholarship is this. So it almost takes one year for, to get this scholarship. So it is, for example, if we consider the year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, so in April, in the end of April or May, the application, preliminary application form starts. And then till May, June, we'll have the interview and by the end of the July, we get the results. So in August, we need to contact the universities and get acceptance from at least one university. And after that, till we have one month time to submit the acceptance letter. So after receiving an acceptance letter till September, we, we need to submit the acceptance letters to the embassy. And the secondary screening and the university placement results are like will be announced around October, November. And finally, the mixed acceptance letter will receive it around December to January. So I highly recommend students to start applying, like to start preparing the process like one, two and a half years ahead of the program. For example, if you are going to graduate in twenty twenty-four, then now is the time for you to apply for the scholarship. And more details will be provided about the timeline and all the, some of the tips will be provided by Mr. Yonihara-san. And after receiving the final acceptance letter, so based on your enrollment, either you can come to Japan in April or September and the flight tickets will be arranged by the embassy. So throughout this process, so once you clear this preliminary application process, the embassy of India will be in constant touch with you and like whatever queries or whatever doubts you have, they will clearly clarify them for you and the process is very easy. See, the only thing which is required is patience. So it's because it's a very year-long process, so it's possible that we easily like lose patience or like we, like some students' point of view, I know that we like, we tend to get very anxious about the results. But having patience and just, and following the process step by step, will eventually you can reach the final step. So this was the timeline from my experience. So like, like I mentioned before, so please check the website regularly and also the embassy will be in contact frequently. So after this timeline, so like for the next step for you would be to clear the preliminary application form. So which will be starting in the end of April or May. So just wait for the embassy to announce the applications. And the meanwhile, you can start working on the field of study and the research program plan. So because this is one of the very important documents which will decide, feel that the scholarship or not. So that's what, that is about the scholarship and my experience of receiving this scholarship. So now I would like to discuss some of the challenges I faced. That is, after, after receiving the scholarship, we need to clear the entrance, the entrance exam of the university. And in my case, the University of Tokyo, like it was, the entrance exam was very difficult. It was, I would say it was one of the toughest challenges I had to face. Because the course, I mean the syllabus for the exam would be the courses related to bachelor's and also we need to be, we need to thoroughly answer all the questions which are related to our research field. So having an, this entrance exam, clearing the entrance exam and joining a master's program would be one of the challenges we'll have to overcome. But because you're still in the universities or you might have just graduated. So then it's not very difficult, but if not, you can like revisit your courses on the bachelor's and prepare for the entrance exam. And some of the other challenges which I have faced in everyday life would be the food, especially in the initial days. So now that I'm accustomed, accustomed to, because I know where all the grocery stores and restaurants are. So it is, it's not difficult now, but in the initial days, it's possible that you might face a little difficulty in the food. But once you get to know the location of the grocery stores, restaurants, so where you can get Indian food, so it won't be a problem. And the next challenge would be the Japanese language, especially in the starting days. So all this is, this is in the first semester or in the starting days which, which I have faced. So in the Japanese language, there's many formalities which have, which have to be completed in Japanese language. But universities have this tutor system where a Japanese student will be allocated to you to help with, to help and to help you and get on with your everyday life. So till one year, we have a tutor allocated to us. So whatever doubts or queries we have, we can go to the tutor and till we get accustomed to the Japanese culture. And also all the universities have Japanese language classes. So we can enroll in Japanese language classes and, and it's, it's better to have Japanese language proficiency, not, not for the university set, but just to get on in the everyday lives. So by enrolling in the Japanese language classes, we can be acquainted with the language. And, and it is like some of the students and some of my friends and colleagues, I know, in two years of time, they were able to clear entry and into level of Japanese language just by enrolling in the courses. So it is not a difficult or unachievable task. And another challenge was staying away from family. And so there is a very strong Indian students community here. And you can also enroll in various circles in the university which actively participate in various activities. So you can find your home here, like we just have to give it some time. So these are some of the challenges which I have faced here. Now covering, like mentioning about my academic and cultural experiences. So like coming to Japan and studying in the University of Tokyo has, like has widened my horizons and it gave me the opportunity to study under professors, like some of the best professors in my field and work on the cutting-edge research. So it, I would say it has been a life-changing experience for me and it opened many doors in terms of networking and career opportunities. So it's not even the courses which we have, there, there are many project-based courses where I had the opportunity to enroll in this project-based courses and work with two companies directly on firsthand. And I was also fortunate enough to get an opportunity to go to Indonesia from the university to attend an international workshop. So if you are a graduate student, you would know how important it is to present in conferences. So I also had like had the opportunity to present in three conferences. So there are various opportunities which we get by being involved in the university. And looking back, one of my highlights of the master's program would be to work on a project on the remotest island of Japan, which is the Sushma Island, where we were, a group of us were working on verification of the basic energy plan created by the government of Japan. So this was one of the highlights of the master's program. Like I said, this is only like in my field. So similarly, many students have other experiences. So there are so many opportunities which we can take, we can avail like by studying abroad. And looking at the cultural experiences, so having a new cultural experience was one of the compelling reasons for me to, to come, like to go abroad and study in Japan. So in my case, I was blessed with having various opportunities. Like for example, I'm, I'm quite impressed with the art of Ikemana, that is Japanese flower arrangement. So the, I learned about the importance of balance or harmony and simplicity with, by attending this workshop and the exhibition. And there are also many Japanese festivals, we get to know different, the significance of many Japanese festivals and try various Japanese food and the Miyati Myland is one of the, one of my favorite places here. So besides these, another important thing in the cultural experience would be exposure to many different kinds of, different people. Like for example, we get to make many international friends and, and often we share our cultural traditions and customs. So one of my friends from China has taught me the importance of celebrating a Chinese New Year. So and by exchanging red envelopes. So it's the exposure we get by interacting with many students of many nationalities. So it completely changes our perspective. So not only learning from other people, so we can also introduce Indian culture to people abroad as, I mean people from other countries as well. So another important thing would be like, like getting the language acquisition. So it's quite easy for like for a student to be here, study and get the language proficiency. So yeah, these are some of the cultural experiences. And looking at the overall impact studying in Japan and in the University of Tokyo, I would say it indulges this sense of independence and being self-responsible for everything. And I have had the opportunity to participate in various international events and organize events within the university as well. So it is, I would say for someone, for me, it was a life-changing experience to come here and study in Japan. So yeah, I would like finally mentioning, I would say that you can indulge in various activities here. So if you, if you love food, so there are like many different cuisine options, you can try various options. So even the landscapes and nature in Japan is quite attractive. So you, you would definitely love traveling as well. So overall, I would say you can have a thorough academic and cultural experience by coming to Japan and studying here. So with this, I would like to conclude my presentation. And if you have any questions for me before we go, you can post them in the Q and A portal and I'll be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vaishnavi-san, for the very insightful presentation. I think you covered all the essential aspects and students are so curious to know so many other things. And they have asked a couple of questions in the Q and A portal. So can I go ahead and ask you a few questions if you don't mind?
Yes, 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 sure, yeah.
Okay, to all the students, I won't be able to ask all the questions. We'll try to cover the important questions and then Vaishnavi-san, you can go ahead and answer the questions later. But firstly, I would like to know, in terms of the research that you are doing, how would you compare it with, if you went to the US for doing your research? So how is Japan's research different from US, US's? If you had done your research in the US, how would it be different?
So I would say the, in US, the universities in US both are equally good in like course-based curriculum and research-based curriculum. But the universities in Japan are mainly focused on research base. So whatever you do comes out in the form of a research. Like for example, if you enroll in a master's program, you will have to take a few courses. But the overall, the program curriculum is entirely designed as a research-based program. So that gives you a lot of scope to publish more papers and present in more conferences. And another advantage, I would say, of doing research in Japan is the time period. So for example, the US universities, they are, they have a very strict like guidelines to graduate from either masters or PhD program. So that would take quite a long time. Like for example, to graduate a PhD program from US, it would take around five to six years. And I'm sure the uni, the, the labs and the research is equally good in the US as well. But the time period when we say it is very long. So but in Japan, we can graduate PhD, the, the average duration is from three to four years. So I think the time is one of the important factors.
Yes, I think you very rightly pointed out that in Japan, you usually complete your PhD in three years, which is an advantage over other countries.
Yes, I'm sure.
There's one more question. One of the students wants to apply, I believe, for the master's program at the University of Tokyo. And entrance examination, is it in English or is it in Japanese for international students?
No, for international students, it is completely in English. So whatever the Japanese students will be doing it, the question paper for them is in Japanese, but the same one will be translated to English for international students.
Okay, and won't be broken English? Will it be English that's comprehensible to international students?
Yes, yes, it is like a perfect English, like how we give English exams in India. So it is something like that. It's not a very broken English.
And lastly, I would like to know how would students in India contact professors for PhD programs? Where can they find information about the PhD programs in Japan?
Okay, so like if you just go to the university website, they have, most of the universities have, like for example, you consider at least national universities, they have well-designed websites. So it is not very difficult to find department-wise and graduate school-wise the program you are interested. So we have a lot of questions in the chat box saying so-and-so program is available in the university or not. You just Google that and it will give you the results. So you just have to visit the website and know if they, just find out a lab which you are interested in, if the work is being done there or not. So.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much for answering the questions. There's still many questions related to the PhD programs and the master's programs. So you can go ahead and answer them in the Q and A portal. Thank you so much again for the presentation.
Thank you.
Also, many students have been asking questions about the MEC's scholarship. I would just like to put it out there that also if you do not get the MEC's scholarship, it's not a problem. You can always apply for the private scholarships. And the tuition fee is very less compared to the countries in the West. Also, if you do not get the scholarship, it's five times and six times lesser than countries like the US or Canada. So I would just like to put it out there that also if you do not get the MEC's scholarship, it is fine. You can apply for the private scholarships and the tuition fee in Japan is not very expensive. So you could go ahead and check the university website or also contact the admissions office of the university for more information. So now I'll not waste a lot of time. I will share my screen. And now we'll have a presentation by Mr. Yonihara, the first secretary of the Embassy of Japan. He will give us an insight into the MEC's scholarship of Japan. So Mr. Yonihara, over to you.
Hey, thank you, Kushi-san. So I'm Yonihara, I'm the ambassador of Japan in India. It's pleasant to meet you. And I'm so appreciate you have an interest to study in Japan. Okay, so today my, my presentation is... Okay, so today my eh my presentation is for mainly MEX scholarship. So I will share my screen with you. Yeah, so but so. Yeah, so before uh my eh explanation or or about MEX scholarships. I will explain about the uh hmm so the relationship between two countries, yeah. As you may know, oh Japan and India have maintained extremely good relations. Japan and India are making various efforts in cooperation in many areas. So uh last last March, a Prime Minister's meeting was held in Delhi. And uh so at that time, uh both ministers uh mentioned about. And uh about increasing the uh uh number uh in India student who study in Japan. Yeah, so both government from now, both government try to. Uh try to main- try to do many things to accomplish it. But so uh this is a so disappointed data. And this list is the destination of India student who study in abroad. Yes, number one, USA, number two, Canada, uh UAE, Australia, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, so about Japan, thirty five blank and the number is around one thousand and three hundred. Yes, under Iran, keep us check, check, something, yeah, there's. Uh a small country, yeah. Yeah, so uh we need to increase this number from now, yes. So we we are so happy if you uh study, if you uh. Uh realize study in Japan in the future. Okay, so. Uh I'll explain about Mexico's logic, yes. So makes the means of Mr. Eh Eh education, culture, sports, science and technology in Japan. Yes, uh uh to be honest, I'm ordering from Mr. Education. Yeah, this scholarship is one of the scholarship uh for studying in Japan. And uh so old scholarship studied from um what nineteen fifty four. And until now, there are many eh student, I mean a student uh came to Japan uh. From many countries who are studying in Japan. And uh the objective uh of MEX scholarship program is to promote mutual understanding with foreign countries. And to form human networks and so on. Yeah, so MEX scholar, uh eh Mrs. Scholarship student is a. Uh so we think uh the uh represent of the country. So we treat uh we do we do them like that. Yes, so the uh the procedure of MEX scholarship for selecting university and for entering Japan. After accepting the differs from the normal procedure for pri- uh private fund study in Japan. Also, or please, eh if you want to uh apply MEX scholarship, you need to know, you need to understand about the process. Uh very much, okay. So uh. Yes, uh I will uh share uh the outline of MEX discussion. And from from India, uh we eh really good the seven program. Uh yes, but so the other three programs is for whole school teacher. Uh student who study Japanese language and Japanese culture and for uh businessman and public servant. Yeah, so today I will explain about the three or four programs. Uh one is a research program in this is, this is a graduated level. Graduated level. And this and the other three programs is uh undergrad level program. Yeah, undergraduate and college of technology and special training college. Okay, so about a research program, uh we in. There is a uh we offer, we will, we offer uh about thirty seats, around thirty seats. Uh every year, yeah, and uh the age limit is under thirty five. And uh for uh. Uh for to pursue their master degree and PhD and doctoral degree. Okay, and benefits, uh like that, okay. And eh next uh next pay, the tuition fee and travel fee eh also. Yeah, so that is a very beneficial uh scholarship. And then graduate and uh the three programs, the same as. Uh but so uh other program, uh the other program embassy recommends twelve candidates. And age limited is uh from seventeen to twenty five. Uh but the spirit encourage is only eighteen to twenty five, twenty five years old. Yeah, and uh. So I will explain about more detail, but so already he missed. Uh explained about research, so we we will read the uh uh. We I will explain eh about the students briefly. Yeah, so oh sorry, I didn't tell about that, so. So if we already started a recruitment, a twenty twenty four recruitment. Uh yes, so if you uh want to apply eh next year's program. So you need to prepare and apply eh as soon as possible, yes, bring them some that. Yes, so first a research program, uh as I said, this is for all study and researching. Master and doctoral degree uh doctoral course. And then there are two types of programs, embassy recommended and the university recommended. But so the about the process of university eh recommended eh, that is a di- a differ and different. Uh depend on the university, so today I will explain about the embassy embassy recommended. Hey, so as I said, we already started to oh hmm. Application uh application process, yeah. And uh the deadline, eh uh application deadline is fifteenth fifteenth May, yeah, so. Oh yeah, uh yeah, only in two weeks uh from now. Yeah, so please uh prepare uh soon, okay. And the quest screening end of May and writing exam is twenty fourth June. And interview of end of June or and to our enjoy. And we will eh we will inform the notification of the result. For screening, uh end of July. And uh. And uh finally, eh eh we. Yes, uh final, a notification, final screening is January or February, sometimes March. Depending on the uh applicants, okay. And uh uh adopted eh a student who will travel to Japan in April or September or October. Okay, so uh eh Mr. K said, as Mr. Mr. K said. Uh oh in in this uh in this first squ- in this first screening. And the quest screening is so important, the quest screening is conducted uh based on the research program. And so you should uh you should make a good research. Yes, and uh so. So you need to find the adequate supervisor, course and university when you apply eh when you apply this program. Uh yeah, so. But but uh adequate means uh. Yeah, uh so uh that is not, that is not, uh that doesn't mean. Eh the university is high level or supervisor is so very infamous of uh. Something famous or something, yeah. So adequate means uh the supervisor or university course is adequate for your research program. Okay, so you need to find a a good supervisor and course or depend on your research. Okay, so I will I will in in share the three eh website uh to find the. It's an uh adequate supervisor, one is tiny. And yeah, you can, you can read the uh. Or the article or paper or thesis in Japan. Yeah, so or you can, you can find a uh uh researcher in Ja- Japanese. Researcher in Japan, uh who research she's a few uh near. Uh research the field so near your research program, okay. And research map, uh you can, you can uh the uh find the, you can. Search such the researcher, Japanese researcher directly. Okay, and uh you 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 need to use each university website too. And uh so if you find adequate researcher in Japan. But so you need to confirm the course of Japanese universities. Uh which eh the the professor, uh researcher belong. Okay, so I'll explain, I I'll inform the three websites, one such for school. Um this is a post a posit on Just So's website, study in Japan, study in Japan. And this website is so very important for all. First uh people who want to study in Japan, yeah, so please access this website. And there's a uh uh website, Japan City Support and Japan Japanese College and University Portrait. Okay, so please access these websites too. And about writing exam, uh the student need to take Japanese and English test. In Japanese is one hundred minutes and English is one hour. Okay, so previous years' question papers are posted on the uh website in study in Japan and and eh. And otherwise for interview, uh in interview, we'll try to confirm the points, motivation, readings and clear ground something. Okay, so and from last year, uh each eh each please professor joined, join in this interview. So uh process will ask, asks the applicant. Uh about the fields or knowledge, knowledge of the fields or many things and about the research plans on something. So if you pass the first uh the quest screening, you need to prepare for it. Okay. And after first screening, eh candidates eh conduct universities and supervisors. And uh get professional acceptance, eh. And if you get a uh professional push, eh if applicants get the. Uh professional acceptance from the university, we want to uh uh. They want to enroll, so almost they can, and they can travel to Japan, eh. And the final result is offered in January or February, or sometimes sometimes March. Okay, so I'll share uh I'm guide the website of the Embassy of Japan. So we already posted, it posted the information on this year's. Uh applicant applying. Okay, so this is Embassy of Japan's website and the project, please create the education and the study in Japan. And the Japanese Government Scholarship, yes. So yeah, uh there is a new one, yes, so research student, I U G, C D, S T C, yeah. So please check uh the uh uh this website. And uh so today I will explain briefly, yeah, so. Oh you need to read application guideline carefully and this information uh. In the website, okay. So first you need to prepare the primary, primary application form. And submit this web and this email address until fifteenth May. Okay, and uh if you pass the document screening. And you need to submit other documents, academic, academic record or. Uh ready certificate or uh health eh health certificate or something, uh eh. So first you need to prepare uh this form, okay. I will return to my presentation, okay. Okay, this is uh uh research student. Okay, so next, uh I will explain about the undergraduate level. Yes, so we already started this recruitment too. And there's a deadline in twenty twenty ninth May. And uh we're going eh embassy conduct uh applications, document screening and then uh. So we're informed uh candidate, candidates for writing test and interview, middle of June. The end writing exam, eighth drive for U G and ninth drive for H T N S T C. And interview middle of June, and we will inform the result of first screening, uh end of July. And uh after that, the next conduct finance screening and. We will inform the finance screening as a result of finance screening in December. Uh I think the end of December, okay, and travel to Japan uh are April. Now as I said, uh the embassy can recommend within around twelve candidates of each program, okay. So but so uh our research student, uh we can recommend around thirty seeds, thirty candidates. And maybe so there's an allocation from Max and Mofar. So basically, if we, if the embassy recommend the candidate in this such program, our research program. So they almost all pass finally, someone oh. Or missed, but so uh U G and C T and S T C will recommend uh within twelve candidates. But so uh in final screening. Eh so yeah, financial, financial successful candidates are chosen from the one with the best score in the candidates of all countries. Based on the writing test, interview and academic record. The most important uh point is uh so writing this is very important for the final screening. Eh so you need to eh if you want to pass the uh uh if you want to pass the. So uh want to be successful, uh so you need to get a good score of writing test, okay. And in particular, Japanese language is important because so many eh. Many applicants cannot get a good score of Japanese, eh. So if you can get a good score, I think it's a very uh advantage for. And undergraduate in Japanese undergraduate eh is about uh basically four years. And uh but eh mixed student need to take a proper prepared education for one years, eh so there eh. Student study in Japanese language was a subject in Japan for one years. Okay, and then so in perfect, perfectly education, so make student choose her. Uh uh choose her university and course, eh with mixed. Okay, eh but so this course, student can choose her, choose national university only. And the student need to pass an entrance exam uh of the university eh in prepared education, okay. And this so I'll inform the about the placement. If applicants have a higher level on Japanese proficiency eh. Hmm basically N two eh yeah, at least N three. Eh so the can, uh the applicants can skip their prepared education, eh. So after passing the finance screening, the candidate choose a course and university in the list of mixed uh in the in the list. Uh pro- provided by all mixed. And uh fields, um undergrad, fields of undergraduate, social science and natural science. Okay, uh almost, uh there are many fields, eh. And about the writing test, uh social science and humanities A and B. And about the writing test, uh, social science and humanities A and B eh the subjects are Japanese, English and math. Natural science A is eh the subject is Japanese, English, math, chemistry and physics. And B, in natural science B, Japanese, English must be eh chemistry and biology. In the same time, in Japan, Japanese is one hundred minutes and other subject are one hour. And the interview about fifteen minutes. Okay, so also, I yes. I'm sure the embassy's website, yeah. So what's so, oh, about undergraduate levels program, uh uh all Japanese diplomatic mission in India, including embassy eh eh so conduct, conducts recruitment. So, oh, please check the, eh, please, please check the diplomatic, diplomatic diplomatic mission who need to apply, okay, so that is different, depend on your uh uh living place, okay. So in the embassy website eh, we'll inform about that. Yeah, so please check it. So that is a different depend on the program, okay. So Kolkata General, uh, Consul General of Japan, Kolkata, Chennai, Mumbai, Bengal and the embassy eh conduct uh screening recruitment or all uh also for undergraduates, but College of Technology and Special Training College, Kolkata consulate and Chennai consulate and Embassy of Japan, uh, only in conduct, it's with with not it, okay. Okay, and the College of Technology, we call the Kosen, and basically this is a, a, a higher, and this school is the highest education institutions that offer the comprehensive five years program uh for junior high school graduate, okay. And but uh so major scholarship student of C D in College of Technology, he starts from the south here. Uh with the C D, so skipping the first and second. So in total, all mixed students uh study in three, eh, for three years in C D. And but there is a one year preparatory education. So in total, of the students of C D eh were study in Japan for four years, okay. And so all classes in College of Technology will given in the Japanese language, so you need to applicants need to have a Japanese language proficiency, okay. And uh years is like that, and the writing exam is basically he Japanese, English, mathematics and something eh science, physics or chemistry, okay. And next, Special Training College Program. So S T C eh, yeah, S T C is eh uh so higher, uh, higher education in Japan. Yeah, and yeah, first secondary courses are called, we called professional training college or uh senmon gakko, gakko means skill, senmon is major, okay, senmon gakko, major school, oh. And the S T C provides the know-how, technology and skills useful in, in one's future job and life as well as an improve innovation. Yeah, so there are many fields is offered from, from S T C. In technology, personal care and new, new nutrition. Education and welfare, business, fashion and from, from economics, culture, general and general education. Yeah, so hmm, so if you want to study about animation or manga or illustration or something. So S T C eh offered, offer us these, these fields, yeah. Recently, there are many applicants who want to study, who want to be animator or mangaka or something in the future. Yeah, so if you have an interest about the these fields, so please apply this program. Okay, S T C is basically eh for two years program. But eh same as U G and S T eh, she eh, she did eh, there is a one years preparatory, preparatory education. And so in total, three years program. Okay, so before applying, you need to choose a major and the subject. So you cannot change after applying, so you should choose carefully, okay. And writing exam is uh Japanese, English and Mathematics, okay. And the interview is about the same as other program, okay. So, oh, these are, uh, and this is my presentation. And I think you have many questions, so oh, today, I, I, I will answer your question as much as possible, but I think I cannot answer all for all uh all questions. So, oh, okay, at the embassy, uh, there is a, uh, so we posted our home number uh on my, sorry, yeah. Uh, in the embassy website, this one, yeah, so if you have a question, please contact this number, home number, okay. Okay, yes. Okay, so we are looking forward to receiving many applicants, yeah, so if you want to apply, so please prepare uh as soon as possible and apply until the deadline, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much, Yune Harasan, for the very comprehensive presentation. I'm sure um there's so much information on your presentation. I'm sure students have gotten a little gist of the MEX scholarship application process. Um, the students still have many questions regarding the scholarships, I'll try to ask you a few questions uh in the Q and A session. So firstly, um, some students don't have seventy percent as a C G P A. It's around sixty-five percent or um sixty percent, around that range. So in that case, are they still eligible to apply for the MEX scholarship?
Okay, the difficult question because so uh next ask uh require us uh applicant need to get over seventy percent, basically. Basically means if the research plan is so excellent, so the embassy can recommend applicants. If that, that academic record is under seventy percent. So, hmm, so they can apply to us. But basically it's difficult, but if you can, if you can make a excellent research plan. So maybe pass, so to be honest, uh, in three or five years, um, just a few oh successful applicants uh who get, who got under uh seventy percent. Okay, so there is a chance, but a small chance, I think, okay.
Yeah, thank you, uh, one more question. Many students, I believe, are in the C D S board, which is the Indian College of Law. So, um, their twelfth scores aren't out yet. Uh, they might have predicted scores, but they don't have the final scores of twelfth grade. So in that case, when they're applying for the MEX scholarship, um, what should they submit? What transcripts or like grade reports should they submit?
Okay, eh, so they can apply, eh, so when you apply the MEX scholarship, so oh eh eh applicants need to submit the commit record who go who get at a time, so if you cannot get the final score of C B S E and so you need to submit later, okay. So eh, so you don't mind, so they didn't mind, they can apply eh to the MEX scholarship.
Thank you, one last question, are there written examinations um everywhere in India? Or do they need to go to a particular state to take the written examination? How does that work?
Yes, uh, so about research program, oh so, oh, writing, writing exam is conducted in daily only, so they need to come to there eh if you pass the first screen, document screening. And eh, as a program, undergraduate level programs, so each diplomatic mission uh offers the venue of writing test. So they need to go, or applicants eh need to go the venue. Uh, so diplomatic, diplomatic mission of, uh, eh, is for, uh, offered, yeah.
Thank you so much, Yun Harasan, for answering the questions, there's still many questions about the MEX scholarship. So you could go ahead answering them in the Q and A portal. Also, um, you, while you were presenting, you shared many important uh information that is available on the websites of the embassy. So I would really appreciate it if you could share those links uh on the chat box, so that students can refer to these links even after the presentation. And the weather.
Okay, I see.
Thank you so much, Yun Harasan, for your time and for the wonderful presentation. Um, we will, I'll share the agenda slide once again. So now, uh, we'll have a presentation by the University of Tokyo India Office by Ms. Sakshi Roy. Uh, before I hand over to her, I will give you a brief introduction of the University of Tokyo. Um, Tokyo University is the first imperial university in Japan, and it is regarded as one of the most prestigious educational institutes internationally. The university is home to several notable alumni, including prime ministers, Nobel laureates and astronauts. Graduates of the university have landed themselves with great job opportunities and had, and had a significant contribution to the society. So now I'd like to request, uh, Ms. Sakshi to give us an insight into the university.
Thank you so much, uh, Kashi-san, for the introduction, I'll just share my screen. I hope everyone can see my screen.
Um, Ms. Sakshi, it's still not there.
It's not there?
Oh, yes, now it's there, yeah, thank you.
So, namaste everyone, uh, my name is Sakshi and I am working um from the past three years as Assistant Manager at the University of Tokyo in the office. And it's my great pleasure for me uh to introduce the University of Tokyo in the, in the office with you. So, um as you know that the University of Tokyo can be regarded as to that and is Japan's top university and a world-class center for research and a vibrant academic community. So we are founded in eighteen seventy-seven and we have over ten faculties, fifteen graduate schools and twenty-five research institutes. And every year we enrolls about thirty thousand students, in which forty-two hundred of whom are international students. And our university is officially headquartered by the Ministry of Education, Culture, Sport, Science and Technology in Japan. Yeah, so uh we are located in Boomkyo, Tokyo, Japan, and we have uh three main campuses. Mainly the Hongbo campus, which is a graduate school. And Kumawa campus, which is um an undergraduate school, Kashiwa campus um is a graduate school of frontier science. And there is Shirokan Haneidae campus, Institute of Medical Science. So as of twenty twenty-one, the University of Tokyo's and um alumni members and faculty members, researchers include fifteen prime ministers, thirteen Nobel Prize laureates and five astronauts. And as of now in Japan, there has been total thirty-one Nobel Prize winners and thirteen of them are associated with the University of Tokyo, which is quite a big achievement for us. All right, so this is information about the Overseas Almany Association. So hundreds of thousands of individuals have graduated from our university and a wide range of U Tokyo Almanys have contributed greatly to the society with their accomplishment, leaving their mark in the world in various fields. So we have over fifty-six oversea Almany associations all over the world. And of course, um, if you'll become the part of the University of Tokyo, uh, you'll be able to join the local U Tokyo Almany Association and have a lifelong relationship with the University of Tokyo. And also, alumni uh will also be invited to participate in a range of special activities and events organized by the alumni offices, including homecoming days and etcetera. So yeah, it will be a great experience for you to join us. So I'll briefly introduce um about our India office. We are one of the overseas offices under the Global Thirty Project uh to open in India. And our aim is to attract excellent international students to higher education and research in Japan by collaborating and networking between overseas regional offices. So we provide comprehensive information on Japanese university, not only the University of Tokyo, but uh we can provide information for all other Japanese university, because our office is, you know, comes under Global Thirty Project and is funded by the Japanese government. So we organize education fairs and seminars throughout India. So yeah, you can uh check our Facebook or Instagram page for webinar information and join our webinars. And our, at our office also maintains the network of um Indian and Japanese alumni of the University of Tokyo. Yeah. So, um, this is the information about number of higher education institutions in Japan. So Japan has some of the best universities in the world, so according to Q S World Ranking, University of Tokyo rang number one in Japan. And several other Japanese universities ranked among top five hundred universities in the world. So no doubt, if you consider Japan as your study destination, you'll study in a well-rounded education system and you'll have a chance to gain more international perspective. As you can see in the table, there are eighty-plus national universities, ninety-plus public universities and six hundred-plus private universities offering variety of courses in Japan, so most of the Japanese universities offer courses in English in various disciplines and do have the world's best research facilities. All right, so this is about um, um, the bachelors and the graduate programs in Japan. So in Japan, bachelors last for four years and it will take up to two years to complete a master's degree. And a minimum of three years to earn a PhD degree. So this number will vary depending on the faculty, like for medicine and veterinary sciences, it will um take up to four years. Also, um, you can enroll in a course to earn a degree as a regular student, or if you're not studying to earn a degree, you can enroll as a research, credit earning or audit student. So most of the Japanese universities allow two intakes for uh spring semester. Application process starts from September to October and for autumn semester, application starts from uh March to April, yeah.
Sakshi, are you here?
Sakshi. Um, San, can you hear me now? Actually, there was some problem with my internet.
No problem, no problem, please continue, we can hear you now.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you so much. All right, so uh this is the information about faculties and graduate schools um in the, at the University of Tokyo.
Um, Ms. Sakshi? Um, Miss Sakshi. Uh, Miss Sakshi, you're not audible. I believe her internet is uh a little poor. Until then, please post questions with you in the portal. Sakshi, can you hear us?
Hi, uh Miss Kushi, can you hear me now? Um, yes, I can. Internet connection. Actually, my slides are uh taking too long to load. So that is why it is taking time, yeah.
Oh, it's okay, it's okay. No problem. You can continue.
Okay, so can you see my slide, the faculties and grad? Yeah, thank you so much. So here you can, uh you know, see the, we have quite a lot of faculties and graduate schools. So it's quite a very diverse and comprehensive university. Um, not everything is taught in English, but we have approximately twenty-plus degree programs at graduate level which are offered in English. So yeah, today I have a limited time for my presentation, so I'll not go deeply into each and every program and courses. I'll explain a few courses to you. So, um uh today I'll be covering a few English taught programs offered by our university. At the undergraduate level, the University of Tokyo offers only these two programs, that is in English. The left one is a P program and um that is a liberal arts program of four years. And the right one is a global science program, which is for the transfer student. So for G S E, you must have a completed basic undergraduate level classes in chemistry. And um at least two of the subjects from mathematics, physics or biology from uh for applying to the G S E, yeah. Alright, so this is a um international multidisciplinary engineering graduate program. So this program um is offering advanced professional training, leading to the degrees of masters of engineering and doctors of engineering. So you'll have a unique uh opportunity for, of taking a degree from the University of Tokyo with lectures and research conducted completely in English. And this program is formed by seven departments, um which is mechanical and notics, electrical, chemical, materials and precious and bioengineering. So students who are interested in any of these field can definitely look for this program. Also, students who have exceptional academic record will be awarded scholarship for this program. Alright, so this one is the graduate program on intelligent information processing. So if you are interested in the topics like artificial intelligence, machine learning, data science, quantum computing, I O T, next generation network, auto-driving, high-performance computing, information security and software verification. So you can definitely look for this graduate program. Again, uh there is no uh need of Japanese language requirement for applying to this program. For more information, please visit the website or you can also contact us. So this is an English um IPATS. This is an English language MSc and PhD program at the Graduate School of Agriculture and Life Sciences. And it offers various areas of research that constitutes the fundamentals of agriculture and development studies. So for October twenty twenty intake, online, online application system is already closed. And um, uh yeah, so uh now it will open from mid-September to early October. So if you are interested in uh agriculture field, you can definitely look for this program. Yeah, for more information, you can please contact us. So uh this is some information about preparation for application to graduate school, just like any other universities. Um you're required to have a research plan for applying to the University of Tokyo. So first, you'll have to prepare the research plan and then you'll have to find the professor um who specializes in your field of interest. And then you have to contact them, send them a letter of recommendation from your current or prior academic advisor to, and obtain their permission before enrolling in their laboratory. So after the conversation, uh once you're sure that this is the right program for you, submit the application form, um including the required documents. Yeah, so this is the um process of for applying, uh for preparing to the graduate school at the University of Tokyo. So internship programs between India and Japan. So the University of Tokyo has various short-term and non-degree programs provided in English that are taught by top-class professors and are available to highly motivated students from all over the world. So many of these programs are open to the students of Partner University of U Tokyo Global alliances. And in this, we accept undergraduates or postgraduates as well. So today, um I'll explain about these two internship programs offered by the University of Tokyo. So first is UTRIP. It is one of the research internship program, basically for undergraduate students with a keen interest in pursuing postgraduate degree in natural sciences. Um, um, uh topics like physics, astronomy, earth, planetary science, chemistry or biological sciences or related fields. Uh we can apply for this program. So as UTSIP Kashua, it provides hands-on research internship opportunity in the field of natural and social science. So this is a six-week summer program for academically motivated undergraduate students. And there are so many other short-term programs. I cannot explain each and every program because we have limited time for the presentation. So just for now, you can take a screenshot or scan this QR code to learn more about short-term internship programs in our university. I'll also share the details in the chat box later after my presentation for you. Yeah, so about the academic fees, uh Japanese universities have lower tuition fees as compared to the other Western countries. So schools in Japan charge an admission fee in the first year and uh tuition fee and some other smaller fee as per semester wise like uh in India. So, um in Japan, tuition fees are the same for local and foreign students. If you ask me in Indian rupees, at the national universities is approximately starts from six lakhs per year. Whereas you'll have to pay um eighteen lakhs in US public universities. And in Japan, you can apply for tuition fee exemptions as well. Alright, about the scholarships, there are two types of financial assistance for international students. So sc- scholarship and the tuition exemption or reduction by each university. So most of the scholarship become available after you arrive in Japan with the recommendation from your school. However, there are some scholarship there um that you can apply for before coming to Japan. That is mixed, which is already explained by um Mr. Yune Haro from the embassy of Japan. And the second is just a student ex- uh student exchange support program. That is for exchange students coming to Japan based on the exchange agreements between the universities. So please check with your home university for available programs, yeah. And after the admission or enrollment in Japanese university, so you can apply for mixed honor scholarships or scholarship by private foundation and other local government scholarship. For most of the Japanese universities have, um yeah, tuition fee exemptions or reduction scheme for international students. So for this, you can apply at the time of admission or you can directly ask about uh this to your admission office. So this is the end of my presentation. For further information, kindly please feel free to contact us at this mail address. We would be very happy to assist you. And additionally, we are very active on social media as well. You can follow our Facebook page, Instagram page to get updates regarding study and work in Japan, webinars and related information. So thank you very much uh for your attention and interest and I wish you best of luck for your future. And I hope my presentation will be able to provide you with valuable and fruitful information in short period of time. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Sakshi-san, for the very detailed presentation. Um you covered all the aspects of the undergraduate graduate programs in Japan. And I'm sure students will apply this year to the undergrad and grad programs at University of Tokyo. Once again, thank you so much, uh Miss Sakshi, for the presentation. I'll be sharing the agenda story. Um so now we'll have an interactive session for around fifteen to twenty minutes. Um there are many questions in the Q and A portal, so the panelists uh will take out time to answer these questions. Um you could go ahead, ask, asking more questions about um the universities and the scholarships in Japan. Um so, if possible, I'd like to request um the panelists to turn on their video as I'll be asking questions um right away. Um, so first, um as Miss Vaishnavi seems available at the moment, I'll ask a few questions to you. Um. So if, um, I believe you are a scholarship recipient and you are also um pursuing a PhD degree in Japan. So, uh many students want to know that how do you, when do you apply for the MEC scholarship? So upon acceptance from the university, after that, you're supposed to apply for the MEC scholarship? Or first, you're supposed to apply for the MEC scholarship and then apply to university?
Um so for embassy, this is only, there are two types of applications, scholarships. One is which you get before you enroll in the university and one is which you get after enrolling in the university. So next embassy recommended scholarship is the only scholarship which you get before enrolling in the university. So once you apply for mixed embassy recommended scholarship and you receive it, then you can contact universities. Because uh if you clear the application process, you'll get, will get a preliminary acceptance uh mix, preliminary acceptance from the uh MEC scholarship. So using that, we can contact universities and then universities will send their acceptance letter. So in that way, uh we need not contact universities beforehand because uh we got, we get the scholarship and then we get, we contact the universities. But whereas in other kinds of scholarships, in all the other scholarships available, so first we need to get acceptance from university and then apply for scholarship. Is it clear?
Uh, oh, so when, so for under, for undergraduate, graduate or doctoral uh programs, does the embassy usually recommend or um do we first have to apply for uh or the university recommends? How does it work?
So with the embassy, when we are going with the embassy, so embassy, uh we first, we need not contact the universities. They also suggest us not to contact. Also, one, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. Um now, I'll ask a question to Mr. Yune Haro.
Yeah.
Just a minute. Students, please go ahead, asking question at Q and A portal.
So you checked uh STD, a graduate, completed STD twelveth in March, eighteen twenty-four. So.
Um, for students who have, who are going to graduate uh in March, twenty twenty-four March, when are they supposed to apply for the MEC scholarship?
Okay, so, yeah, so answer is yes. But so, so hmm there is a uh one point uh, uh I need to tell. Yeah, so, um, it's a, uh Indian school town and the Japanese school town is different. Yeah, so there is a, some problem. Yeah, so, oh, now, also, before uh traveling to Japan, uh in undergraduate program and so before traveling to Japan, if you get a, if you can be, finish the uh twelfth grade, uh they can apply. Uh yeah, so, but so, I think so C B S E score, uh a student can get the C B S E, C B S E score in May or June or something. Yeah, so before traveling to Japan, they cannot get uh C B S E score. Yeah, so but uh it's okay. Uh so, oh, oh. The student who, who, who can get, uh who, who will take the C B S E uh or exam uh next March, so they can apply. But uh, but uh hmm, after traveling to Japan and uh start, uh we'll start the uh asserting the preparatory education. If the scholars uh cannot get uh, uh, cannot uh get uh completed a C B S E score, uh so if you failed uh C B S E, C B S E exam, so that uh, uh, so, or miss, Mr. Scholars uh is canceled. Uh, I think so, there is so less uh possibility, so almost, yeah, candidate can pass the C B S E in, in the final exam. So, but if uh the student, uh the student cannot pass the uh C B S E final exam, so, oh, yeah, hey, that, that can, that student uh is canceled or makes a scholarship. So, they need, they need to return to jail in there after that. Yeah, so, oh yeah, eh, so, oh, oh, student who can, oh, who can take, if we, who can take a uh C B S E in next March, it can apply in this, this year's program.
Um so if you want to enroll um next, next um September or October, you'll have to apply right now. Um also, is uh Yune Harasan, is A C T score or A C T scores required for MEC scholarship?
Well, uh S T C and C D.
A C T on SAT scores, SAT or A C T, A C T scores or SAT scores.
Oh, S T, yes, yeah. So in MEC scholarship, uh we don't need to, to submit some S, S A, S A T ones and scores. Okay, eh, but if you have a, a TOEIC, a TOEFL or IELTS or something, an English score or Japanese language skills score, J L P T, so please submit, um yeah, eh, when you apply.
Thank you, Yune Harasan. Um I'll ask a few questions from Miss Vaishnavi now. Um. Just a minute. Um, there's one question on research. Um, could you please give some tips on how to write a research theme or a research plan while you're applying to universities in Japan?
Okay, so, uh one important thing uh we need to have before starting that document is what field we are interested in. So like have a general overview of what excites you to do. Like for example, in my case, I had a participant of solar panels as well. So I want to work more on solar panels. So I have that idea. So with that general idea, go in detail in speci- in specification. Like for example, if you like a lab in the university, like look on the website, I mean, look at the labs in the webs, on the website of the university. So if you like a particular lab, so try to read more research papers or the, just the research outline being conducted in the lab and get some idea and try to frame your research work also in that way. So usually what I noticed was, uh if your research theme or plan, if it's going to solve some, uh like a global problem or like some, uh which provides a solution to something, then I think the chances of getting selected are higher.
Thank you so much for answering the question. Um. Question being, did you submit your um TOEFL or IELTS scores while you are applying for the graduate program? Um or the PhD program at University of Tokyo?
Uh so for the next, it is not required, but while enrolling into a program in the university, yes, it is required, like for, like TOEFLs or TOEFL or IELTS. But in my case, I was uh like, I started my masters when COVID started. So in that, because it was an exceptional case and there was no requirement of submission of TOEFL or IELTS. But I'm not sure if that rules have changed. So if the website says you have to submit, then we have to submit.
Um, yeah, as uh Miss Vaishnavi just mentioned, that usually if you have studied in an English school for uh high, uh for high school or like a twelve years of education, you usually do not need to submit your TOEFL or IELTS scores. However, I would recommend you to submit them if your scores um are decent. So, and many universities require um these proficiency tests, uh the scores of these proficiency tests. So if you have, please submit them. However, it is not mandatory because they take into consideration that you have studied in an English school for twelve years.
Hmm, yes, so it depends on the department. There are some graduate schools and departments, it's probably an exception. But there are some departments which say, no, even though you have studied. there are some departments which say, no, even though you have studied, you have to submit. So it depends on the program that are applying.
Thank you so much. Um. Yune Harasan, now I'll ask a few questions regarding next.
Hey.
Um. Does a student need to submit their original transcript or is photocopy okay?
Hmm, yeah. So uh makes, uh, applicants need to submit the original, but the original means so um the university or schools certified.
Yeah.
Document. Okay. Yeah. So please prepare.
Yes, by certified document, you usually the, the school that you are in, they might have a stamp. So you can probably use the stamp to certify that, so that shows that's authorized by the school. Um. So also photocopy, please make sure that you have the stamp on, the original stamp of.
Yeah, eh, so it's okay if applicants submit a scan, scan copy, uh photocopy, a certified by school or university.
Thank you. Um. Um. Could you talk a little about the specialized training colleges? Um. Is it the S T C?
S T C.
Yes. Um. Could you give us a little more information about that? Um. What kind of courses are available and when this is, do we need to take the examination in Japanese or in English?
Okay.
You can also share a link. If, if there's a lot of information, you can also.
Okay, and so please, uh, we posted the in, information of S T C in the embassy's website. So please, please contact the website, S T C's website of the embassy. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I cannot share the link. Uh, I don't know why.
You can send, can you send the link to me? I'll send it on.
Yeah, okay. I, I will share.
Thank you. Very much. Um. Um. Vaishnavi San, can I come back to you?
Yes, yes.
Um. Thank you, Yune Harasan, for answering the question. Um. Vaishnavi San, can you talk a little about the graduate programs at University of Tokyo? Um. What kind of programs are available? Like, are there courses in law? Do you have any idea if there are courses in law or in engineering?
Uh, yes, like I think Sakshi San has already mentioned the fields and departments in the university, I mean, the graduate schools. So almost all the graduate schools which they find in India, like for example humanities, laws, engineering, sciences and arts. So like in general, whatever fields are available, so all of those graduate schools are there in the university as well. So you can look into the website and find the department or the lab which you are interested in.
Thank you very much. Um. Also, I would like to know your experience in Japan. Um. As a student, I feel you already elaborated on it during your presentation. Um. But when you just came to Japan and now that you are, you've already completed a few years in Japan, how has it affected your personal or professional growth? Um. How has Japan changed you as a person? How did it help?
Um. Yes, so I have already mentioned this in my slides. So like professionally, if we see, it has opened many doors. For example, uh even though I'm from electrical engineering, I have a little, I mean, I'm interested in space and the activities in this space. So I was able to take courses and like do projects in the aerospace engineering as well. So uh it is, even though you are enrolled in, we are enrolled in one department, we are free to choose any course or like explore any department and any, any, any school for that matter. And the second one would be the opportunities which we get. Uh, like for example, there are many international opportunities which we can avail of, like attending conferences or workshops abroad and a university will be like, very, very happy to fund that. So in that way, I got to interact with many people as well. So the different circles and my peers and the colleagues from various countries. I think overall it uh it changed my perspective of uh of working and even in my personal life, I can feel myself uh being more organized and yeah, so I think that's all.
Yeah, I think you very well answered the question. Um. There are still many questions in the Q and A portal, but many of the questions have already been answered. Um. So students, please make sure that you're checking the chat box because a lot of the answers to your questions are in the links that are in the chat box or have already been answered. Um. So please make sure that you are seeing the links are in the chat box. Um. Now, I would like to, Miss Sakshi Varna, are you available?
Yes, Kushi San, I'm available. Um. Am I audible?
Yes, yes, you are perfectly.
Thank you so much.
So most of the questions that have been asked until now have been about the MEX scholarship. Um. But not much emphasis is put on the private scholarships that are available in Japan. Um. So could you give us an insight into the private scholarships that are there? Um. How do they usually help international students and when do they need to apply?
Okay, thank you so much, Kushi San, and apologies. I cannot open the camera right now since I am unable to access from the computer. So I will, I'll ask, like, I'll answer this question. So as for the private scholarship, when I was a student, I was a master student, my MBA student, I took to make Arni Shipasik University and I was never a MEX or a government uh student. So I was a privately funded student. So I went there with the tuition reduction which I got. But after that, the university, basically, it is a common in every university, in Japanese universities, that you will be receiving a notification from the admissions office regarding the private scholarships. So what you have to do is, you need to basically apply that and they will consider the amount of you have to be enrolled first into the university and after a semester, there you have to apply for those scholarships. And on the basis of your academic transcripts and the performance which you will be doing in your first semester, they select you, they give you those scholarships. And the scholarships are really good. Say, I was an Otsuka scholar, scholar student. So basically, that was funded by Otsuka Foundation in Osaka. And I got the scholarship of approximately two million yen. So uh and it like, it helped me in my tuition reduction and it also helped me in my bank loan which I took from India. So plus they used to also, I mean, it helped me a lot because it reduced the part-time job which I had to do before and it helped and, and I could concentrate on my studies. So please don't be disheartened if you don't get the government scholarships because Japanese public organizations or the Japanese companies provide these private scholarship to the students. Uh, and it is specifically for the, specifically for the students who don't receive the government scholarships. So just be proactive. Get in touch with the admissions office from your universities and yes, you will definitely be getting that. So, yeah.
Thank you so much, Miss Sakshi. Uh, one last question to you. Um. How does studying in Japan help you in terms of your career prospects or learning the language? Um. How has it helped you um in this journey?
Yeah, uh, thank you so much, Kushi San. So uh before coming to Japan, I was, uh, like I was working in New Delhi and I got to know that because everybody was going towards US or Canada, but I thought of applying for Japan because of the language pers, the career prospect at that time. And uh when I came to Japan, I think it helped me brush up my networking skills. I believe if once you are enrolled into the university, you get to meet a lot of international people and international community, you get to learn a lot about their culture, uh, right? And you get to know about the things like, for example, in my case, I met a lot of African students and before coming to Japan, I was not aware about Africa, the Jaika uh and how it is doing in Africa. So after coming here, I got to meet a lot of students who were from Jaika Scholarship and I got to know that how Jaika is working for the development in their country. So, yeah, that was a learning, a little bit learning for me. And that's, yeah, you, you create a lot of network with people, with students, with scholars, with professors and that will eventually help you in finding a job in Japan. So you can always have that network, participate in the alumni and get in touch with various people. So yeah, in terms of networking opportunities, I do got that. So, yeah.
Thank you so much, Miss Sakshi, for answering the questions. Um. Yune Harasan, I have a few questions for you. Um. We'll wrap up in some time, but I'll just ask a few questions to you before we wrap up. Um. Regarding uh the MEX scholarship, how many students from India are usually, uh annually, how many students from India actually get the scholarship?
About Mrs. Sakshi?
Yes.
Okay. So who uh about research student, as I told, uh, really, uh, it's a student we recommended, last year we recommended thirty-four student. And uh, yeah, so I think two or three student not passed the final screening, but around thirty, thirty or twenty-nine, uh, we are in trouble, uh, to travel or we'll travel to Japan in this year. And the undergraduate, undergraduate, so, sorry, nine, we nine or ten, nine or ten candidate can pass, could pass the final screening uh from India, last, last year. Uh, S T C around six, uh, uh, sorry, uh, city, uh, city, S T C is around the um nine or eight, I think. So every year, uh, um, almost same, same number.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Yune Harasan, for answering the questions. Uh, most of the questions have been answered and the questions that haven't been answered in the Q and A portal are, some of them are repetitive. So please make sure you are referring to the links in the chat box. Um. And, Miss Vaishnavi, do you have any message for the prospective students? Um. Anything you would want to tell students um they were interested in coming to Japan?
Um. Yes, my one advice would be to start working on the field of research and the research plan as early as second because that is the main document which leads them to the MEX scholarship. And even when you don't get MEX scholarship, like Sakshi San has mentioned, uh, try to go like approach the university and get acceptance in the university. And after that, even then you can apply like to plenty of scholarships. So funding is not a problem. So you just have to have a proper research plan and research idea. So that is what is important.
Thank you so much, Miss Vaishnavi. Uh, Miss Sakshi, do you have any comment?
Yes, Kushi San, I do have one. I just want to let all the students know, all the potential students know that uh like uh, thing is, I think students are not aware about these private scholarships because all we've been hearing is that, you know, there are, the Japanese government is providing them scholarships. They, they actually focus on the Jaba government scholarships because of the amount. But you have to be proactively, like I mentioned before, you have to be like, be proactively participating, you know, in those kind of uh sessions or you just get in touch with the admissions office or keep checking the scholarship page on the website because uh in, in, in a year, they, they take out this opportunity to provide the scholarships, I think twice. So uh like for April, as for in September, enroll, enrollies. So you need to get in touch with the admissions office as soon as you get, get, you know, just be aware, just keep looking on it. So that's all I just wanted to know. And like I said, uh, don't be disheartened if you don't get government scholarship because Japan is providing a lot of scholarships, private scholarships as well. So yeah, that's about it.
Thank you so much. Yune Harasan, is there anything you would like to tell students?
Hmm.
Is there anything you would want to inform students?
Oh, okay. Eh, so uh, as you know, MEX scholarship is so competitive. Yeah. So, yeah, so last year, a research student, we got uh applicants of research student over one thousand eighty hundred uh and U G E over five hundred. Yeah, so very competitive. But so, uh, as, as, as participants say, as the panelists say, so there are many scholarships for studying in Japan. Yeah, so, or don't give up to, for studying in Japan. Please find a good university, adequate university and scholarship. If so, you can realize your dream in studying in Japan, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Yune Harasan. Thank you, Vaishnavi San. Thank you, Sakshi San, for answering the questions and for your very insightful comments. Even I would just like to inform students that there are not only government scholarships, there are also private scholarships. So also because MEX scholarship is so competitive, you might feel disheartening as Sakshi San said, if you don't get the scholarship. But it's okay, um, like international students like Miss Sakshi or myself, even we have received scholarships from private institutions or our university also. So please also take that into consideration. Please apply for the private scholarships as well. Um. Also apply to the MEX scholarship or if you do not get in, if you do not get the MEX scholarship, try to apply for the private scholarships. And secondly, not many people focus on this aspect, but transcript is important, your grades are important, it is for students who get good grades are preferred, but please do not forget that extracurriculars is extremely important. If there are any internships that you've been involved in, in any extracurricular activities or volunteer work, all of this is taken into consideration. Japanese universities do not only look at your grades, they look at also the character of the applicant. Uh, how is this person contributing to the society? Um. Or contributing in the field of specialization? How are they involved in different activities? So if you have certificates in, um, at organization that you have worked in or the, or recommendation letters from your manager, supervisor, volunteer work, anything, please submit them when you are applying to Japanese universities because they will be taken into consideration. There are, there have been times when students are exceptional when it comes to academics but are sometimes rejected because they do not have experience on in other sectors. So please submit all the extracurricular activities that you've been involved in throughout your education, especially high school. Please make sure you're submitting an extracurricular activity, extracurricular activity certificates as well. And if you want to enroll next year in September, October, September, October twenty twenty four, you need to start applying from this September. So right now is the time when you're supposed to explore the universities and the uh language programs that are there. There are many English programs, especially, I believe many students have participated in there, I'm looking for masters programs or PhD programs. There are plenty of them in Japan in most of the fields. So do not hesitate to contact the admissions office for more information. And we are always here on the University of Tokyo, in the office team, to help you with any questions that you have uh regarding Japan's higher education. And also, I would not make this too long, I'll try to wrap it soon. But we might also from June start providing counseling services. So if you are interested in learning more about Japanese universities, even outside the webinar, um, we will help you. Uh, so please stay tuned. More information about these services will be given in the upcoming webinars in May. So please stay tuned with all the updates and we hope that this year we can help you with the application process um and guide you throughout the pre-enrollment journey. So, once again, thank you so much to all the presenters for presenting today and for answering the questions of the students. And we look forward to your participation in the upcoming webinars as well. I'll be sharing my screen so that you can scan the QR code to register for the upcoming webinars. I'll be sharing my screen so that you can scan the Q R code to register for the upcoming webinars, please give me a moment. Um, we still haven't updated this Q R code, um the webinar dates are still being decided, plus, but please make sure you are saving the link. Um so that you can register to these webinars um sometime next week or in the span of two, three weeks. So, please make sure you scan this Q R code and saving the link to register for upcoming webinars. This marks the end of our webinar, thank you to all the panelists and attendees for participating in today's webinar. The recordings of the webinars uh conducted earlier are uploaded to the University of Tokyo, India office site. The link I will share the chat box as well, so kindly check our Instagram page also for more updates on the webinars. And we hope to see you all soon uh in the webinar scheduled for this uh series. Um, I'll share the link to the, um. University of Tokyo, India office site as well, please give me a moment. Thank you, panelists, um for the presentations, you can log off now. I'll share the. I hope you can access the link, the sandbox, please see the recordings of the webinars here. The registration link is also here. Thank you, Yune Harasan, and thank you, Vaishnavi San, so much for the support, um. Can leave the webinar because I will have to wait for the students to leave, but thank you so much for the support, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, San, thank you.